Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the July 8, 2013 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin our proceedings today with the invocation offered by Reverend Troy Peoples of Delaney Street Baptist Church. Reverend Peoples has been the senior pastor of Delaney Street since April of this year. The church was established in 1928 and is located on Delaney Avenue just south of downtown in District Four. On September the 16th, 2013, the church will be celebrating its 85th anniversary and the pastor has invited all city council members to attend the celebration. The church participates in many community service projects including providing a food pantry onsite, contributing financial aid and volunteers to Second Harvest, feeding the homeless and providing school supplies for local elementary schools. After the invocation will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by District Four Commissioner Patty Sheehan. Would everyone please join me in standing? Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we love you and we thank you for the privilege that we have to be here together today. Lord, we thank you that you are the one who has established and ordained government. We thank you for these men and women who serve in this capacity. Lord, I pray that your hand would be upon them. The decisions that would be made today would be honoring to you, to be beneficial to the people of this great city. And, Lord, we just thank you for your presence here. We ask for personal integrity and character in these men and women as they serve. Lord, I pray that everything that is said done today would honor you and would benefit the great people of this city. Lord, we thank you and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance reflects the United States of America through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor. You were inconspicuous way in the back. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the role and make the termination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lyman.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we'll take note that Commissioner Ortiz is absent. He is caring for his father who's having a medical procedure. Okay, consideration of minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council meeting minutes of June the 17th, 2013.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Hold the favor. The motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. All right, we are right into awards presentations and recognitions and we have a large group of students that's going to help us with this next one. So Lisa Early, Director of our Family Parks and Recreation Department, would you come up and introduce proclamation relating to Parks and Recreation Month?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. July is Park and Recreation Month in the country and the mayor is going to read a proclamation about that, but before he does that, I do want to introduce our students here. They attend the summer camp at the John H. Jackson Community Center and right now, on any given day in the summer, we have thousands of kids at summer camps run by the city at sites all across the city and after-school all-stars through all of the middle schools located in the city of Orlando. So this is one of the great things that we do. We appreciate your support for that. And after the mayor reads the proclamation, I'm going to ask all these kids to come up and get their pictures taken with the mayor and the commissioners. So, but before we get into that, I want to talk a little bit about parks. Some of you know that there is a competition going on around the country that is sponsored by Coca-Cola to vote for your favorite park. And there are some 16,000 parks that are being voted for right now across the country. And as of this morning, Lake Eola Park was number 11. We keep varying between 10 and 11. We may be 10 now, but we were 11 this morning. And so I wanted to show y'all what you can do to vote. So I'm going to ask you to look at your screens and I'm going to show you how to sign up to vote and then how to get a lot more points for our park. So if you look at our screens, you go to parks.livepositively.com and this is the homepage that you get to. And there are three ways to vote and I'm going to show you two of them. First, you've got to register. So you go to the top of the screen here and you hit register. And I'm going to register Mayor Dyer. So...
What makes you think I'm not already registered?
Well, I won't find out, won't we? Then we're going to have to do a dummy registration. We'll make up another email address for you.
Hey, hey.
Okay. August, your birthday? August, wait, let me guess, is it 8?
7.
7th, ah. Year.
1962. 58. 58.
I knew it was 58. Your birthday is a year before mine. Are you a U.S. resident? Don't answer that. Okay, so that's...now I'm going to register you under your city email address, so...it's a little slow. And I'm going to give you a password and I'm going to call it Orlando. How's that? And your zip code must be 32804.
My home zip code is, is it the city zip code or my home?
I put your home.
32804.
Okay, and then HD and what is that, a 7 and a capital D? And you don't want any emails, I presume, right?
Right.
Yeah. And that's it. You're in. Unless, of course, you've already registered. So you just go onto the same website every day and you put in one vote and you can vote for your wife, you can vote for your kids, you've just got to register all of them. And I'm going to close this and I'm going to vote for you. And so hit vote now. And then, dun-dun-dun, your park, in here, you're going to put Lake Eola. Hit the search button and it's right down here. See that? And you just hit vote now. Eighty-eight forty is all we have. This one always makes a mistake. Okay. Okay, I don't think you're logged in. Hang on, we'll log you in. Are you male or female? Hang on. I think it's still loading. Well, I think I have to wait for this to say something. So anyway, that's how easy it gets, especially if you have a faster computer than this one with better internet access. There is also a...another thing you can do to get 10 points every day, but I don't want this to take too long, so I'm not going to show you that now. But we have specialists who can come down to the commissioners' offices and show you how to do that. And this is by basically logging in at least 20 minutes of exercise every single day. And the good news about that is that you can go all the way back to the beginning of the competition, which was June 6th, and you can log in 10 minutes of exercise every day since June 5th and get 10 points for every single one of those days. So if you do that, that's about 30 days ago. At 10 points a day, that's about 300 points for Lake Eola Park, just by doing that, for one person. So that's it. So on that note, I'm going to ask Mayor Dyer now to read the proclamation about Park and Recreation Month. And then I want to thank all of my staff here from the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm going to ask them all to come down when you're done.
While I'm reading this, the students can come on down.
Okay, all right, good.
Whereas public parks provide for the critical green infrastructure that collectively enhances community spaces, making the great state of Florida a great place to live. And whereas parks and recreation experiences enhance quality of life for Orlando citizens by contributing to a healthy lifestyle, building self-esteem and teaching life skills. And whereas parks and recreation programs and events boost the economy, enhance property values, attract new businesses, increase tourism and reduce crime. And whereas opportunities for recreation build family unity, strengthen neighborhood involvement and provide social interaction. And whereas the city of Orlando Parks and Trails ensure ecological beauty, provide space to enjoy nature, help maintain clean air and water and preserve plant and animal wildlife. And whereas the city of Orlando recognizes benefits derived from the quality of public and private park, recreation and natural land resources. And whereas the National Recreation and Parks Association and the Florida Recreation and Parks Association have designated July as Park and Recreation Month. Now therefore, I, Mayor Buddy Dyer, hereby proclaim July 13th as...July 2013 as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Orlando and encourage residents and visitors to enjoy using the parks, trails, recreation centers and special places to enhance the quality of life in our community. (applause). Hey Ed, does this work if we stand up behind that?
Yeah.
All right, the second presentation, I'm going to call on Commissioner Samuel B. Ings, District Six, to introduce Simple Defense for Women Day.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Commissioners. I'd like to introduce Charlie and Tracy Vega, co-founders of Simple Self-Defense for Women, an award-winning company that promotes the personal safety of women and children through their PBS TV show, keynote speaking, DVDs and their very popular seminars and workshops. They specialize in self-defense for women from ages nine to 91 with a focus on how to simply escape and attack, not stay and fight. Charlie and Tracy are the TV show's stars and hosts. Simple Self-Defense for Women has been featured on Lifetime Televisions, The Balancing Act, the John Tess Radio Show, CBS affiliate WKMG Local 6 News, ABC affiliate WESH Channel Two News, The Daily Buzz, Galtime TV, She Knows TV, Hallmark Business Connection, MyBlitz Magazine, Power Women Magazine, Huffington Post and numerous others. At this time, I would like to invite Charlie and Tracy Vega to please come forward as Mayor Dyer would please read the proclamation.
All right. Whereas Charlie and Tracy Vega are the co-founders of Simple Self-Defense for Women, an award-winning company that promotes the personal safety of women and children. And whereas Simple Self-Defense for Women specializes in personal safety for women ages nine to 91 with a focus on how to simply escape and attack, not stay and fight. And whereas Simple Self-Defense for Women has been featured on numerous television shows, magazines and publications, all of which were just cited by Commissioner Ings. And whereas crime prevention is everyone's responsibility and the most effective method of reducing crime against women and children is preventing it from happening in our communities. And whereas Simple Self-Defense for Women is committed to teaching women and children nationally how to prevent an attack when approached by a stranger, how to react to potentially dangerous situations, how to create time to escape, how to escape an attempted rape or kidnapping and how to keep your children safe. Now therefore, we, Mayor Buddy Dyer, Samuel B. Ings, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner District Six, City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Monday, July 8, 2013 as Simple Self-Defense for Women Day in the city of Orlando. (applause).
Wait, you want to go down and take the picture?
Sure.
What?
Where are they, Commissioner? They're still outside?
I'll take them. It's rare. Just hold on to it until I get in.
Okay, how about if we go ahead to the mayor's update and we will return to Simple Self-Defense for Women Day when the Vegas arrive? So Saturday was Commissioner Sheehan's birthday. Hope you had a great day. Would everybody join me in singing happy birthday to Commissioner Sheehan? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Sheehan. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Okay, also over the weekend, or just part of the weekend, we had the Fourth of July fireworks at the Fountain Event. I don't know if it was the most we've ever had in attendance, but there were somewhere in the neighborhood of 125,000 to 130,000 people in attendance and they all got a free shower around 6:30, anybody that was down there. But we had a great fireworks performance, a 20-minute fireworks display. And we got to utilize our new part of the park, the new almost acre and a half section on the east side, which has really turned out beautiful. And Commissioners, I invite you all to tour the house that we kept and have renovated. It is a beautiful facility and it's going to be the perfect venue for weddings. It has a room up top where the bride can make a grand entrance out into the park and then it's just, it's fabulous. I was really surprised when I toured it. Sometimes we do really interesting and have some sexy things and we like to take care of the environment. We have, through our Green Works program, become very good stewards of the environment and sometimes it's also good business. So on today's agenda, Public Works always comes up with just the coolest things. We have an aerobic digester improvement project that's going to help us study how to use food waste and restaurant grease in creating energy. So it'll allow us to capture more energy, save landfill space and further increase recycling opportunities. Way to go, Rick. And then the last item that I'm going to mention is, this one's near and dear to Commissioner Lyman's heart. I know that on the CRA agenda is some funding for the expansion of the Napford Community School, which has grown beyond its capacity. And the school's going to add some additional space that will accommodate a little over 70 childrens. And the expansion, you recall when we demolished the Amway Center, we took all the scrap metal out and recycled it and put it in a fund to be used for the Napford School. So the demolition of the Amway Center has made way for the construction of the Creative Village, but also has allowed us to enhance the Napford Charter School. Okay. Vega's still not here? Commissioner?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda are a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our commissioners an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda and things of interest from their districts. We rotate the order in which the commissioners speak on a weekly basis. And today it is Commissioner Sheehan's turn to go first.
Well, thank you, Mayor Dyer, and thank you for mentioning Lake Eola Park. That 1.3 acres looks absolutely breathtaking on that corner where, you know, we cleared out some of the homes but saved one and it's just really, really nice to be able to add that much to the park. So I want to thank the Parks Department and know that Chris Wallace worked very, very hard to get that ready in time. And they actually painted historic colors and did a great job in really making that facility pop. On the agenda today, we have Item B2, the Budget Review Committee Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant for $896,000, bringing in some money from the East Center Florida Regional Planning Council. Through our head sustainability grant. Item C1, Historic Preservation Board Minutes. I've been noticing some of the new infill development that's been happening in the historic districts. And I want to say that Richard Forbes has been doing a phenomenal job in making sure that that matches and looks really good. If we can only do it because those dreadful duplexes are being popping up like mushrooms all over the city and they look horrible. So if we can get some design standards on some of this awful infill that's happening in these R2 neighborhoods, that would be great. And if we can put some of those same restrictions, not as much as the historic districts, but at least have them match some of the areas where they're being built and so these awfully oversized duplexes, I think that would, that would be great. And on Item I4, the Public Works Rapid Response Contracts, they did an amazing job on Weber. And if we could just get something done on Bumpy, I know we needed to get that Weber project done first, but Bumpy is awfully bumpy, so if we can get something done on there, that would be great as well. And that's all I have today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move on to District Five. Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Just a few announcements because the pastor, Glendy, is here again today. But we got good news. You were in Virginia, but Chief Rooney called to let me know about the grant we have for $200,000 in iris cameras in Paramore. Well, of course, when I text or called the pastor, he said, "Make sure those cameras are in residential areas, Chief." He and I had already talked about my possibly helping, but thank you, Chief, for those, for getting that grant. A lot of things we do, and I think we mentioned a little bit of it this morning during the budget workshop, we do rely on grants because we don't always have the budget to do that. So thank you very much and I'm hoping those locations...the chief is right there. Okay, just letting you know, right there. Check with him. I also want to just make another announcement. Mayor Dyer didn't mention it and I'm surprised, but the paper had him. Regarding our 39% minority participation, MWBE over at Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center and Janera had him look like he normally does on a workday, but had me looking like a construction worker, which was fine. I've done construction work. And it was a great day when you celebrate 39% MWBE participation and having hired a 1,000th person just happened to come from the Paramore community and that's what the blueprint does for our community with our venues as a great city program. So thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Janera and the blueprint and all of the folks who helped with that. It was a great celebration. I was simply elated. And on a further note, I had texted the chief some OPD photos with Sean's daughters. I had my grandkids for the summer and I cooked more in one month than I had in 28 years because those little kids can eat. But we were at the Eola Park on the Fourth and they ran into these motorcycle guys and just had a ball with them, chief. So thank you and for the attitude of the guys in Bradley moseying around the park with Elise, who turned nine on Sunday. And we went to Legoland. Legoland is a great place for people who are lazy. You know, want to take the kids and have a good time and you just sit and have fun? That's a great place. And plus it's beautiful and shady and really nice. But I do have some sad news, at least to me. A wonderful lady, Jeanette Spink Austin, was a WESH TV reporter and anchor. We had her memorial on Saturday. Some of you don't remember, but Mayor, many years ago, the Spinks House burned on the corner of Westmoreland and I can't remember, I don't know if it was Bentley or Livingston. It was a beautiful house. Dr. Spinks was a dentist and Lila Allen was here at the time and we did another beautiful house there to honor that memory and that great man for the community. But Jeanette was the last of his daughters, so we had her memorial. Tonight is the EPA meeting regarding $400 million possibly to be spent in cleaning up the gasification plant damage that's occurred over the last 50, 60 years. This is their meeting. This is not a City of Orlando meeting. I will be in attendance. They sent out the notices. Some people got them, some didn't. But it's just the beginning of things we've been doing for, I've been here 15 years. Another meeting that talks about it, but this time with more detail about how we're going to shut down part of Robinson, how we're going to build those 50-foot walls that go into, how they are going to, into the ground, 50 feet below surface. And it's going to take some things and then some smells and fumes. So I really wanted to make that announcement the way I had to last council meeting when someone came in with some incorrect information. It's always good to have good information. And another piece of good information, Fannie Mae has come into possession with most of the Yucums' property and, but not all of it. And we're hoping to have, and Commissioner, I'm asking you, maybe we can host this community meeting together? Or if not, I will, I've already notified District Five to talk about the future of some of those apartments that the Yucums have now lost in foreclosure. And working with Fannie Mae and our own code enforcement office and legal department has done a yeoman's job in making good things happen for the city of Orlando. And I just wanted to, to make those announcements. Onto the agenda. I am very happy to see Dolores Batson go to the Citizens Appointment Board. I'm hoping now that maybe we can have a few more representatives from Westside and particularly our District Five. I know she knows lots of people. She's a great lady, so I'm excited about that. We do not have to explain B10 because that was a mistake somebody made a few weeks ago. And I am excited about Napford getting those additional portables. We had met with Superintendent Jenkins, Thomas and I in Boring, and we're moving on with that project and we're excited about it. H1 with those cameras with OPD, Mr., I mean Pastor Glendy, cameras, that's not the cameras we're talking about. Officers having the cameras in the car and whatever, it's good for the officers, good officers, and it's good for citizens. And the chief has been working on lapel cameras and a lot of things. We've been working since you've been chief and before you were chief with Valdimon. So this is great news on Agenda H1, so thank you, chief. On I1, that WBQ Design and Engineering, one thing that's going to happen at that intersection of Church and Westmoreland, it's going to be an entryway feature into Paramore that we're moving on regarding the entire improvement along Church Street. That was a Tagger grant of, I won't always say 18 million, but I think it was 17 and by the time it came through the state, we probably had about 13, 14, how much was that? The state always takes the money off the top, period, and send what's left down to us. But the important thing is Church Street is closed off at different sections and it's going to be a wonderful improvement. Special thanks to Congresswoman Brown and our grant writing for Tagger. Just as we got this, this money, we've got Tagger grants for, what is it?
Limo expansion.
Yes, for the limo expansion. So that's just, just good news all around, just really, really good news. So I think I've already talked about Napford and I think that is about it for great news on the agenda. There's some other things regarding District Five, but I think that's the greatest of the news. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report that the Reverend Cannon Nelson W. Pender received a Lifetime Achievement Award. He is a pastor that resides in District Five and his church is in District Six. The 100 Black Men of Orlando President Ronald Rogers and all of the 100 Black Men of Orlando awarded Father Pender with this Lifetime Achievement Award at their Scholarship Awards Dinner that was held on Saturday, June 15th at the Rosen Center Hotel in I Drive. And then on Saturday, June 29th, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, that morning around 10:00 a.m., we had a civil rights restoration workshop and it was hosted by Representative Bruce Anton. We had several members of the community to attend and lots of resources too, even from the public that were present. They brought a lot of their materials with them and were seen by representatives throughout the city and the state. So it was a great turnout for Representative Bruce Anton. And then also I'd like to express our sincere regrets on the loss of Ella Dorcas Rose. A lot of us knew her as Dorcas Rose. She was a community icon and also a part of Valencia's Advisory Board of which, I believe when I was on the police department, I can't remember if I was sergeant or lieutenant, but we served on the Black Advisory Board for the Valencia Community College at that time. But Mrs. Rose passed away and her funeral was held Saturday, June 29th at the Episcopal Church of St. John where Reverend... Church of St. John, where Reverend Father Pender performed the ceremony. And also, on that same Saturday at 7:00 p.m., the Florida Voters League held its 55th Annual Convention Banquet. And this was held at the Rosen Center on International Drive. Our local delegation included District 6 constituents, Ezzy Thomas and Mary Maxwell. So thank you for your participation and also a great event held there at the Rosen Center. And also, on Friday, June 28th, the Walmart Neighborhood Market had its grand opening, store number 4160. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Commissioner Linum, for being there at this event as well. We had greetings from the store manager, Yvette Miranda, and so they're looking for some great things. They've hired a lot of people, I believe over 200 people, a lot of them coming out of the local neighborhood surrounding Washington Shores. And so many jobs were filled at that particular store. And thanks, too, to Bishop Allen Tiddy Wiggins of the Hope Church and the Village of Orlando. And also, thanks to Ally Bradswell with the Central Florida Urban League and also Paulette Edwards with the Central Florida Urban League, who helped organize this event. The Walmart Neighborhood Market awarded five different nonprofits $1,000, and the Young Blacks in Action, Howard Gentry, was one of those to receive $1,000. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District 1. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of things going on in District 1, and I try to highlight those on my website. So with that, I think I'll yield my time to Commissioner Ortiz. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And Commissioner Ortiz yields his time to Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you for the additional time. And if you'll just sit back for a moment, I'll take the next couple of hours to talk a little. I'm going to do that. Commissioner Ings, thank you for mentioning Dorcas Rose. One of the things that, she was one of the first ladies who actually served on the Board of Directors of the Christian Service Center and in our founding 42 years ago. So I had a chance to work with Dorcas and was thrilled to count her as one of my friends. The Baldwin Park Independence Day Bash was this past Friday, had a great turnout, several thousand people around the shores of Lake Baldwin, and had a wonderful event to, a community picnic beforehand. So appreciate the work of the Baldwin Park merchants over there, as well as the Baldwin Park Association over there. Couple of things I want to mention coming up. And this comes up this Saturday is the College Park Neighborhood Association. They're doing their Movies in the Park over at Dartmouth Park. And so please come over on Saturday. Also on Saturday is the Audubon Park Garden District's Bastille Day. They're doing a fundraiser, annual wine and cheese pairing over there to support the garden district. And then on Sunday is the Family Day, the Manella Museum. It's a chance for everyone to come free. We try to do that at least once a month to get exposure to a great museum and a great asset in our community. And then in addition to that, Orlando Rep. and Orlando Shakespeare Theory are doing a couple of events coming up, family fun, family musicals, we call it. Sleeping Beauty and Shrek the Musical are coming up. So if you're looking for something to do during the summer, those are some great places to go. Also, I want to mention the National Night Out kickoff in District 3 on August 1st. We'll be doing it over at Gaston Edwards Park. It's a great chance to come and get excited about the National Night Out on August 6th that will be following weeks. But at least come that Thursday night, August 1st, and get a chance to enjoy the community and build some new friends over there. The only thing I want to mention today, and I share it every time I get a chance to, is that our city really runs on the back of our volunteers, our volunteer boards. And I just want to say a special shout out to those from District 3 that we are going to be recommending and approving today. Brandon Blase on the Audit Board, Chris Carmody on the Certification Board, Ginger Malcolm on the Chapter 57 Review Board, Karen Anderson, Scott Sodelsky, and Jennifer Tobin on the Missile Planning Board. Those are the ones from our district. We have some great volunteers throughout our entire city. And frankly, just like every other organization, we literally stand on the backs of our volunteers who are willing to commit this to us. So I appreciate that and appreciate their work as well. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's, without objection, recess the City Council meeting, and we will convene the CRA meeting. First item of business, I think I can handle, Thomas, which is the meeting minutes of the CRA on June 17th, 2013. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Item number two, as mentioned by the mayor in his remarks, which we appreciate today earlier, is a NAPFOR funding agreement. You may know that NAPFOR, for several years, has been at capacity and desires to expand. We have an opportunity now to acquire four portable classrooms from OCPS that they're surplusing, and I'd like to take advantage of that opportunity. The total cost associated with the acquisition of transportation, civil engineering, and other site plan work and hookups is $150,000. Again, as the mayor mentioned in his remarks, 100,000 of that would come from a creative village development fund that results from recycling of metals from the Amway Arena demolition that was allocated to be used by NAPFOR in the future. And so staff is requesting that CRA approve funding in the amount of $50,000 to help with the acquisition and installation costs associated with the expansion of NAPFOR community school. I should point out that CRA Advisory Board did recommend approval in this June 26th meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. We do have one individual who would like to speak on this matter, Luana Gelzer. Same rules apply for the CRA meeting as the City Council meeting, so five minutes.
Luana Gelzer, 76, 74, St. Stevenson Court, Orlando Zip 32835. I am here to speak on the funding agreement for the NAPFOR. No matter what you call it, it's a charter school in the Paramore community that serves the entire Orange County student population. I have no problem with a charter school. I have a problem when city funds, be it CRA, downtown development continues to go to support a charter school. I asked many earlier this year, how many dollars have been allocated to the charter school? I have that information. Yes, I am a business owner in the community of Paramore that serves children of preschool ages, but I have a problem when we continue to fund a charter school. No matter what the circumstances are, by now, that school should be able to sustain itself. Why do we single out this school and give them funds? I have a problem with that. Even though something else was... So I'm going to say, when I was here back on June 17th, I talked about education. I talked about the community school. I gave you an F, and I want to say, now, I have no problem in changing your grade, because by you providing them with this additional resources, whatever you might classify it as, calling it a community school, it's still a charter school. So I gave them an F, but I'm going to give you an A+ for corporate welfare. You can say it's a nonprofit, you can say whatever you want to. It needs to stop you selecting your organizations to give money for to, when it's city tax dollars, whatever funds it comes from, it's wrong. And if it's not equally divided up among all the organizations in the city, stop it, please. Earlier, I understand that you had something on the city agenda, and it was in reference to the Amway leasing agreement with the Central Florida Sports Commission. I wanted to speak on that behalf because I was able to get a copy of that agreement. Once again, why such a beautiful organization is allowed to be, to reside in a magnificent building that you all talk about on a regular basis, the downtown arena? This is supposed to be the prime location for any business to be located in. However, why is for five years, their rent is only $5, $1 per year. That needs to stop. That also is your special business development, special groups, whatever you want to call it, that is truly corporate welfare, and it needs to stop. Corporate welfare from the City of Orlando needs to stop. I'm going to keep coming back and forth. You do not have to agree with me. The data supports what I'm saying. It needs to stop. So once again, you say you're all about Paramore and the growth of Paramore, but you specifically select organizations you want to provide incentives to, whatever you want to call it. But I am asking the city to stop doing it to the rest of the community. And I'm so glad that they have a net community meeting tonight. I know about EPA. I've called them. And the reason why I'm talking about this, because y'all took it away, the opportunity for us to speak and be heard by the rest of the community. So when I come up here on the general appearance, no one knows what I'm saying. They don't see it, they don't hear it. So it looks like everyone's in agreement with you. We have the right to disagree with you. I respect you, I expect the same. If you can't do it, that's your problem. But I've never disrespected any of you. However, I have the right to disagree with you. And it's not $400 million. I know the commissioner made a mistake. I've had that grant, it's $400,000. Check the tape. But when I was here on June 27th, on June 17th, I was told $25 million was coming to the Paramore community. I'm still looking for that information. Taking my name off a list, not providing me with the same information that you provide to the other community members, it will not stop me from coming before you. It will not stop me. I'm not intimidated. Stop the phone calls. I'm not working. Happy birthday, Patty, because I've had my job spring call. I'm self-employed. I'm happy. I have the right as a citizen to question you. Stop the corporate welfare. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion, and you're probably right. We don't necessarily agree with it, but you have every right to come address council. Thomas? Okay, so we've got a motion before us on the funding agreement relating to the NAPFOR charter school. Discussion hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, Thomas, number three, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three is the CRA Budget Amendment 2 and Resolution. This proposed amendment to the 2012, 2013 CRA budget would include an expense line item of $50,000 for the NAPFOR school expansion. Proposed amendment also includes a budget transfer in the same amount of $50,000 into revenues to accommodate such expenditures.
Move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Further business to come forward, CRA, Thomas?
There's none.
Then we will stand adjourned, and we will now convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting. And the only item of business is accepting the meeting minutes from the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District Advisory Council of May 8, 2013. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so the motion carries, and we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting, and we will reconvene the City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, that brings us to hearings. Number one, you want to read the title of the hearing?
This is a Second Amendment to the Third Amended and Restated Development Order for Millennium Development of Regional Impact, DRI 2013-0001.
Is there a motion on the Second Amendment?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. Okay, I'll open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone here that would like to testify on the matter before us? Seeing none, I'll ask for Commissioner comments or questions. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ordinances, first read, Madam Clerk, number one.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, changing the zoning classification on a portion of the subject property from IG to AC1, generally located north of West Gore Street, south of Carter Street, west of South Orange Blossom Trail, and east of South Rio Grande Avenue, addressed as 830 South Orange Blossom Trail, and comprised of 1.67 acres, more or less, amending the city's official zoning map as initiated by the property owner, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land with an address of 4698 Emerald Forest Way, generally located at the southwest intersection of Conroy Road and Vineland Road, comprised of approximately 30 acres from R3B to planned development PD District, providing conditions of the PD zoning district, directing amendment of the official zoning map, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning portions of Rollins Street, Alden Road, Bedford Road, and Camden Road, generally located at the intersection of Rollins Street and Alden Road, providing for severability, correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan.
Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number four has been previously deleted. Number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan by changing the future land use map designation from office medium intensity to mixed use corridor medium intensity on the eastern 3.24 acres, more or less, of the subject property, generally located south of West Colonial Drive, west of North Orange Blossom Trail, and east of Springdale Road, comprised of 5.22 acres, more or less. Moving the subarea policy S 5.2 boundary to exclude the subject property, creating subarea policy S 5.3 to address future development of the site, directing amendment of the city's official future land use map series, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number six.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending Chapter 56 of Orlando City Code, Transportation Impact Fee by amending Section 56.16, Establishment of Transportation Benefit Areas by revising Exhibit B, Providing Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Codification, Correction of Scrivenor's Errors, and an Effective Date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And number seven, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land located generally at the southwest corner of the intersection of North Orange Blossom Trail and West Colonial Drive, comprised of about 5.22 acres from the office medium intensity district with the traditional city overlay district to the planned development district with the traditional city overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the PD zoning district, providing for amendment of the city's official map, severability, the correction of scrivenor's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for tuning in or joining us on the web or being here in person.